Monday, August 5th, we do have a quorum. Only item for tonight's workshop is discussion of consent and regular agenda items. So council, if you would, check your packets there. We have item D1, public hearing. Zone change from LI to MD. Questions or comments? We'll move on.
I'm so glad that was not me. That was not me. It was not me.
I need y'all to just stay off the Youtubes. All right. Item 2, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for heavy equipment rental. That's up on 35 for a red coat. Item D3, public hearing, ordinance granting special use permit for automotive repair. 1901 South Stemmons. It's the old National Tire and Battery Building.
That's very recent.
Yeah. Item D4, public hearing, ordinance granting a zone change from AO to LI. That's on the southwest corner of Highway 121 and Olphons Prairie Road. Glad to see that one's getting fixed. Fires and wind. Item D5, consideration ordinance for a special use permit for backyard cottage.
Ooh, I like that.
Well, and I appreciate staff, when we were going through this, this actually looks like we need to come back with the, because these kinds of lots should have that entitlement already. Is that right, Richard? So we're going to come back and clean that up with the UDC?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Item 6, D6, public hearing, resolution of the City Council providing for the adoption of the 2024 Annual Action Plan. This is for CDBG and HUD funds.
I had a question about this. There was a fund in there that was the first time award of that type. So what is that?
So home grants are federal dollars that come for you to use for affordable housing purposes. So we found out recently that we qualified, as long as we brought a match the first year, to be able to get a direct allocation every year thereafter for home grants, just like we do CDBG funds. Again, it's from HUD, but for affordable housing. Our match this year, we actually, the state was willing to give us, give City of Louisville our match, so that we could then get on to the federal program. And so we didn't have to put any money out of pocket. We got state and federal dollars this first year.
Awesome. Thank you.
And moving forward, that'll all be under this same?
Yes.
Item. Item F, consent agenda. F7, removal of that. F8, design studio GH, $75,000 for artwork at the Louisville Public Library. Item F9, technical assistance with the National Council for Community Development. 10, economic development agreement between City of Louisville and 305 East Round Grove. Item 11, approval of the Finance Policy 3, item 13, removal of accounts receivable from general ledger balances. I can remember very, very few of these that actually have ever come to council.
Yeah, there's not, there's not, it's limited in scope. I mean, it's limited in scope. We limited it in scope, but also in just applicability, there's not a lot of these things. It's mostly the library that this is a benefit. And now that we're non, we don't charge fees for many things, it's even more limited. But it is an efficiency.
Item 12, draft fiscal year 2025 financial plan for Denko Area 911. Item 13, both myself and Councilmember Green are going to have to refuse.
I got this.
Thank you, Senator. Why he has a broad shoulder, so he can carry the load. Item 14, consideration ordinance of the City of Louisville approving the 2425 Annual Service Plan update and to the Service Assessment Plan. That's Josie Lane bid. And we have reports. And we do have a brief closed session tonight. Consultation with attorney. Questions or comments on the agenda?
Good to go.
If there are none, people will return to order at the regular session at 7:00 p.m.
All right. We have our regular session of the Louisville City Council called to order. We do have a quorum. First up on tonight's agenda, invocation with Mayor Pro Tem Patrick Kelly.
Please join me for a moment, a sign of contemplation. Thank you.
And Councilmember Kane?
Join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Bring me up here.
And our CEO, Dorian Gray.
Oh, Dorian? Absolutely, Dorian. Come on up. Terry filled out the card, though. That's, that's all I got to go off of. So I want to thank folks here. This is Health Services of North Texas, and we are dedicating this week proclamation to National Health Center Week. So whereas for over 50 years, community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventative health care in our nation's medically underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's health care system; and whereas community health centers governed by patient majority boards to ensure patients are engaged in their health care decisions, provide essential resources and support in the face of disasters and pandemics, and reduce overall costs of care; and whereas community health centers serve on the front lines of providing primary medical care, behavioral health, prenatal care, women's health, and infectious disease care to our community regardless of ability to pay; and whereas the community health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to health care access, improving health outcomes, and reducing health care system costs; and whereas during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's health care system. Now therefore, I TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of August 4th through 10th, 2024, as National Health Center Week here in Louisville, Texas, and urge everyone to observe the occasion with the appropriate ceremonies and activities, including, go get a checkup. That's not on there. I kind of added that. But ladies, if you wouldn't mind, you got a few words?
Well, first of all, we just want to say thank you to the City of Louisville for your ongoing support. Well, first of all, we just want to say thank you to the City of Lewisville for your ongoing support. For more than 10 years now, you have supported HSNT's work to care well for those in the Lewisville community that need a hand up getting access to care for their children, right? For those moms, for those dads, for those grandparents, and those women who are expecting that prenatal care piece. So thank you for your support, and thank you for recognizing Health Services of North Texas and community health centers and the vital role we play in the health of our community. This is our CEO, Doreen Brew.
Just a quick note to add on to Terry. I just want to say how excited we are about our future site in Lewisville at the Serve Lewisville Center. So thank you again for your support.
Standing. Well, thank you, ladies, very much. Here is a proclamation for you to take with you, and I think we have one photo we want to get taken, if that's okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Josh.
Anytime. Glad to help. Glad to help. All right. Item D1, public hearing. Consideration or ordinance granting a zone change from light industrial district to medical district on approximately 3.155 acres legally described as lots 1R-1B and 1R-1C, Block A, Valley Ridge Phase 4 addition, located on the east side of Garden Ridge Boulevard, approximately 300 feet south of Valley Ridge Boulevard, as requested by Patricia Fant on behalf of Generation Housing Partners, the developer, and Dalrock Management Incorporated, the property owner, 24-02-2-Z. Generation Housing Partners is seeking a zone change to allow for development of heritage estate at Valley Ridge, a mixed-income independent senior living community proposed near the intersection of Garden Ridge Boulevard and Valley Ridge Boulevard. This development has been awarded a 9% housing tax credit from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs with a resolution of support granted by the City Council of Lewisville on February 19th, 2024. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 5 to nothing on June 4th, 2024, and it is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, available for questions, and the public hearing on this is now open. If there are no public comments or council comments to be had on this?
I have a question, Richard. I do remember zoning Solia, the next-door neighbor to Medical District. I can't remember exactly why. Is that because it's senior restricted? Or is there some medical component for this one in particular?
Yeah, this one will also be for seniors, just as the one next door is.
So that's why it's going to be zone Medical District?
That is correct.
Because of the senior restriction?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 3.155 acres of land legally described as lots 1R through 1B and 1R through 1C, Block A, Valley Ridge Phase 4 addition, located on the east side of the north Garden Ridge Boulevard, approximately 300 feet south of Valley Ridge Boulevard, from light industrial allied district zoning to medical MD district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Public hearing number two. Consideration or ordinance granting a special use permit for heavy equipment rental on 1.581 acres legally described as lots 1A and 1B, Block A, Interstate 35 North addition, located at 1204 North Stemmons Freeway, zoned light industrial district, as requested by Jason Kilpatrick, the applicant, on behalf of Bart Schott, the property owner, 24-01-1-SUP. Our RentCo is a local business that provides heavy equipment rentals and sales in the North Texas area with plans to expand onto the adjacent lot. The requested special use permit will allow for the expansion of the business and bring the existing site into conformity. Site improvements include removal of the existing pole sign, creation of a more defined vehicular circulation path on site, the permanent closing of the existing northern driveway, and installation of a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer with five understory trees along the street frontage. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to nothing on June 18th, 2024, and it is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Ludke is available for questions, and the public hearing on this is now open. If there are any questions or comments on this? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Council, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance? To approve the ordinance?
To approve the ordinance.
Thank you.
As set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for heavy equipment sales, rental, and service on approximately 1.581 acres legally described as lots 1A and 1B, Block A, Interstate 35 North addition, located at 1204 North Stemmons Freeway and zoned light industrial allied district, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Having traveled on that, I really want to thank the folks at our RentCo for working with the city. I know that sometimes traffic gets backed up on that frontage. I'm really excited about the additional lane, but you guys really worked hard for the traffic flow, and I appreciate that. Public hearing number three. Consideration or ordinance granting a special use permit for automotive repair minor on 1.47 acres legally described as lot 5R-1, Block A, Corporate Square Edition, located at 1901 South Stemmons Freeway, zoned light industrial district, as requested by Mal Asherif Realty Austin, the applicant, on behalf of the Christopher Goschka, my apologies on that one, Trust, the property owner, case number 24-06-9-SUP. The site was previously built to suit for national tire and battery. The property has been vacant since 2019 when NTB relocated to another site. Premier One Auto Care, the prospective tenant, has agreed to make several improvements to the existing building and landscaping to comply with the Unified Development Code and the I-35E corridor overlay district standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to nothing on July 2nd, 2024, and it is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, is available for questions, and we now have an open public hearing for this item. If there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance?
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for automotive repair minor on approximately 1.47 acres legally described as lot 5R-1, Block A, Corporate Square Edition, located at 1901 South Stemmons Freeway and zoned light industrial allied district, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Item passes 6 to nothing. Public hearing number four. Consideration or ordinance granting a zone change from agricultural open space district to light industrial district on 6.364 acres out of the Samuel M. Hayden survey, abstract number 537, located on the southwest corner of State Highway 121 Business and Holford's Prairie Road at 1898 East State Highway 121 Business, as requested by Kaylee Flynn, half associates, on behalf of the estate of Billy J. Myers, the property owner, 24-05-6-Z. The property was previously used for boat storage and was severely damaged during the recent inclement weather events. The rezoning of the site from agricultural open space district to light industrial district will help facilitate the redevelopment of the site to a future warehouse distribution facility. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to nothing on July 2nd, 2024, and it's recommended that the City Council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Ludke is available for questions, and the public hearing on this is now open. Are there any comments to be made on this one? Questions? If none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. The public hearing is now closed. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 6.364 acres of land out of the Samuel M. Hayden survey, abstract number 537, located at 1898 East State Highway 121 Business, from agricultural open space AO district zoning to light industrial allied district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Item five, public hearing. Consideration or ordinance granting a special use permit for a backyard cottage on approximately 0.3037 acres legally described as lot 10, Block E, Vista Oaks Phase 2 addition, located at 1353 Utica Lane, zoned, single-family residential, 6,000-square-foot lot, R6 District, as requested by Colby Minton on behalf of Michael C. Burns, the property owner, case 240611-SUP. The owners of 1353 Utica Lane desire to construct a backyard cottage that meets all supplemental standards in the Unified Development Code. Since the property is zoned, single-family residential, 6,000-square-foot lot, District R6, a special use permit is required. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval 6 to nothing of this request on July 16th, 2024, and it is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Richard Ludke, our planning director, is available for questions, and the public hearing on this is now open. Are there any comments or questions?
Just one comment. Glad to see that people are being able to make use of this as an option for themselves, and that we'll update this with the UDC so they don't have to come before us again.
Yep, absolutely.
I also had a quick question. I didn't see any discussion here over parking, but I assume that's because the driveway is so long that there's parking available for this new unit, but that is a requirement of the backyard parking.
Yes, they are meeting that requirement.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor?
Sir, I did see a hand raised at the back of the room. Do you still need to chat with us, or are you good?
I was just going to say that for me, I'm blind, and there are no extra vehicles associated with the...
So the comment, just so we have it on the record, the comment was that there are no additional vehicles necessitated with this one, and appreciate that. Thank you, sir. However, we have to have that parking available regardless because of the standards. So, you know, at some point in the future, if something were to change. So, but we appreciate the feedback, and thank you for giving us that data set, sir. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a backyard cottage on approximately 0.3037 acres legally described as lot 10, Block E, out of the Vista Oaks Phase 2 addition, located at 1353 Utica Lane and zoned, single-family residential, 6,000-square-foot lot, R6 District, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Public hearing number six. Consideration of resolution of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, providing for the adoption of the 2024 Annual Action Plan is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Authorization for the city manager or her designee to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and acknowledgment of receipt of the recommended fiscal year 2024-2025 City Social Service Agency Fund budget of $240,000 from the CDBG Advisory Committee. An annual action plan must be submitted to the Department of Housing and Urban Development by August 15th, 2024, as a requirement to receive community development block grant funds of $818,349 and home investment partnership funds of $500,696.80 in fiscal year 2425. The CDBG Advisory Committee reviewed the applications submitted by nonprofit agencies for projects that addressed HUD national objectives and consolidated plan priorities. At a meeting on June 18th, 2024, the committee voted 5 to nothing to recommend a social services budget with CDBG and city funds of $240,000. The plan is being made available for a 30-day public comment period. The public comment period ends on August 12th, 2024. City Council's approval is contingent on the city receiving no comments during the remaining portion of the public comment period that would require further consideration of the 2024 Annual Action Plan. It's recommended that the City Council approve the resolution and acknowledge receipt of the recommended fiscal year 2024-25 City Social Service Agency Fund budget as set forth in the caption above. Ashley Farren, our Neighborhood Services Manager, is available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. Have any questions or comments on this one? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. All right. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the resolution and acknowledge receipt of the recommended fiscal year 2024-2025 City Social Service Agency Fund budget as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the resolution and acknowledge receipt of the recommended FY 2024-2025 City Social Service Agency Fund budget as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes 6 to nothing. Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any public comment?
No, sir. And we don't have any ecomments either.
No ecomments either. Thank you, sir. Item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or ecomment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any speakers or ecomments to request a poll?
No, sir.
All right. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Consent agenda passes unanimously. All right. And that moves us to item 13. Councilmember Green, I think you and I need to recuse.
Yep.
All right, regular hearing. Item G13, Ratification of a Temporary License and Access Agreement between the City of Lewisville and NAC Development LLC. NAC Development LLC, NAC, is a developer for the Deck on Main project located at 191 West Main Street. The project will consist of a three-story mixed-use commercial building that will also provide public restrooms. The city owns adjacent property at 206 West Main Street and 207 Elma Street, the properties, which are currently vacant. As the project nears completion, there is a need for storage space for brick and other masonry materials. As a result, NAC requested temporary access to the parking areas on the properties for such storage to aid in the development of Old Town and enhance the area. This license and access agreement needed to be signed on July 22nd, 2024, and now requires ratification. Recommendation from staff is the City Council ratified the agreement as set forth in the caption above. Have a motion?
Move to ratify the agreement as per the caption.
Second.
Let's vote. You need a second motion now?
No.
You did? Oh, let's vote. Let's vote. Five to nothing.
Yes, sir. It passed 5-0.
It passed five to zero.
It passed five to zero.
It passes five to zero. Is that it? We're ready to bring them back in.
Thomas, it is still sounding as if I would never mind.
All right. Item 14, Consideration of Ordnance of the City of Lewisville Approving the 2024-2025 Annual Service Plan Update to the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Public Improvements for the Josie Lane Public Improvement District with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing repeal or severability and effective date in declaring an emergency. On October 6, 2014, the city created the Josie Lane Public Improvement District for the construction of street and water wastewater improvements in a designated area located along Josie Lane north of FM 544 and south of Windhaven Drive. The city adopted an amended and restated service and assessment plan to amend the initial collection date for Phase 2 West of the district. State statutes require an update to the service plan and assessment role to be considered and approved by City Council to provide for the annual levy and collection of special assessments. This plan identifies public improvement costs to be provided by the PID, along with the manner of assessing the property in the PID and the assessment role. The plan is required to be recorded with this county clerk within seven days of approval and passage. It is recommended that the City Council approve this ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, entertain a motion?
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City of Lewisville approving the 2024-2025 Annual Service Plan Update to the Service and Assessment Plan and Assessment Role for Public Improvements for the Josie Lane Public Improvement District with Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing repeal or severability and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item H, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. We'll start with City Council, and Councilmember Kelly?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green?
I was just going to mention that applications are being accepted for Citizens University. If you have put one in in the past, like last year, you might want to resubmit an application just to make sure we have your application on file. And we are accepting applications through the end of this month, and then classes start in September.
Councilmember Jones?
So I'll do my monthly spiel for the R. Lewisville, Texas app. If you have an issue or something of concern throughout the city, it is a great application to use to get the information to the city. I see on some of the social media where people are saying things are going on where the city does not monitor that site. If you put it on the app, I preach it pretty daily. Some people have listened to me, and they've seen results. The cool thing, the cool new thing that I've seen on there, and it may have been there for a while, you can also see requests going on throughout the city. So if there's something that you put in earlier, or someone may have previously put something in, you can see it yourself. So that's a great little feature on there. And just to speak on Citizens University, it is a great program. If you ever wondered how the city operates, how different things work, you don't have to speculate. Again, you don't have to listen to people on social media who don't know how the city works. You can go straight to the source of the city staff. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kate?
I'm echoing what he just said, and remember, we're at capacity at our animal shelter. We've got some wonderful lovable's that need to be adopted.
Thank you.
Oh, just a second. I'm not done. Our Lewisville Fire Department is hiring, so if you ever wanted to be a fireman, fill in application, start working out because there is physical agility.
This is true. Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, apparently I have some breaking library news, and I never thought I'd say those words together, but I'm excited to announce that starting today, Lewisville Library card holders can now stream and download music for free with FreeGal. They can access over 18 million songs, including today's top music and yesterday's hits from a vast collection of artists and record labels. Build your own playlist, listen to curated playlists, or simply enjoy an album, all ad free. In addition to unlimited streaming, cardholders can download up to five songs per week. The downloaded songs are yours to keep. To log into FreeGal, you will need your Lewisville Library card number and PIN. Download the FreeGal Music app or use your computer to start streaming and downloading your music today. Visit the library website for more details on access and enjoying FreeGal music.
Well, there's other words I haven't heard at a council meeting before either, so thank you. Councilmember Torrey?
Yes, I have some things for the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances. We have Acoustic Friday's Songwriting Challenge, which is always very interesting, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville on August 16. Songwriters are requested to write an original song based on a single word, and that word must be in the song. And I don't know what the word is for this month, but it's always very interesting to hear what these songwriters come up with. Then, as always, acoustic jam sessions regularly on Friday evenings at the, presented by the Visual Art League. In activities, we have a VAL art talk, member celebrations presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, and that's on August 13. And there are several exhibitions going on. First of all, Cowboys and Critters, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville through August 24. The Buck and Kerry Show, presented by the City of Lewisville through August. Fresh Ideas 2023 winner Ariel Bowman Lap of Luxury, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, August 17 through September 14. And there is an opening reception on August 17. And finally, Patterns and Textures, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, August 17 through September 14. And again, there is an opening reception on August 17. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney? Someday you'll have one. I know it. It's going to happen. City Secretary?
No report, Mayor.
Mr. Lutke?
No report, Mayor.
Anything?
No report. Mayor, City Council Park fans, got a couple of, a few updates for you. Just a reminder that this is the last full week of operations at Sun Valley Aquatic Center, so we'll be operating during the weekday this week, and then the kids are going back to school next week, so we'll move to weekend operations through the Labor Day weekend. But as a reminder, the Old Town Splash Park is open until October 1st, so keep rolling out there. It's a fun place to be. Put your trash in the trash can. No bikes on the splash pad. Thank you. Also, I'd like to have a shout out to our police department and our SROs who have made Thrive Summer Camp like the best summer camp ever. Thrive was so much more manageable this summer with them around, and they've become camp favorites, and I think you're getting kudos from all the camp kids and staff over there, so shout out to that team. Hope we can have them back next year. And then a reminder that the Thrive annual shutdown for cleaning after summer camp and prepping for the fall season goes on August 19 through the 25th. If you visit the Thrive calendar, you can see where some of your programs will be held at Haring. Otherwise, it's good to, you know, take a break and enjoy your family members. And then just a little bit, a update on what's going on at Lake Park as the water starts receding. We're starting to see what's left behind. It is not exactly what we had expected when it went underwater. There's a, Lake Park, our Sandy Beach Road is, has some significant damage to it. We've been working with public services on getting that repaired, so we're going to go to a phased approach for reopening. Right now, Tower Bay is open. It has been open for about a week, and that's where all of our boats can go and launch. We're going to keep boats focused there probably until mid to late September when we can get the road repaired and some of the boat ramp issues and courtesy dock issues done this weekend. On August 9, we're going to shoot for opening the day use area on the hill, kind of where the playground used to be, and so we're going to have a makeshift entry point coming down the end of Lake Park Road for that weekend. And it'll be a limited access, but it'll get us back into the park. By Labor Day weekend, we'll hope to open back towards Hobie Point and where the cricket fields are and Pike Pavilion are. The good thing is, is we were afraid that we were going to be close to losing Pike Pavilion when it went underwater. It actually gained some shoreline there, a little bit to give us enough time to get that temporary shoreline is. The problem is that Walleye Picnic Area, that will likely remain closed until all shoreline restoration and mitigation construction can be, will be done, so that will be for a while. We are working with the disc golf community to try to get the disc golf course ready for the Tom Old Man McCutcheon Memorial Tournament that's held the first full weekend of September. We're meeting with them, so you'll, we're probably going to start getting a lot of push because the water's receding and they see the park, and it looks like it's ready to go, and it's not quite ready to go, and we'll give you updates as we get closer and closer. We'll make some social media posts and put that out on our website.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work out there.
No report, Mayor.
Taking center stage.
Center stage. So, good evening, Mayor, Council. I did want to give a report. We had some individuals report on our R. Lewisville app as far as Android users not being able to make some requests on the app. It has since been corrected. However, you do have to go to the Google Play Store to download the update, so just wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
Thank you.
Lake level is still at 100%. We're still just barely in the flood stage, so sure, we'll be dropping below that as the temperatures continue to rise. I did want to also announce that we are completely finished with the brush collection. That includes the first round and collection of all those residents that called in that we had missed during the first round, so we are back to normal operations.
Appreciate all the hard work on that. Thank you very much. Chief?
Mayor, just wanted to report to you guys. In a couple of weeks, we're going to be going forward with an encryption protocol on the police radio systems. The main difference here is just these are not going to be scannable radios in real time. The information, the radio traffic is all still a discoverable item to the general public with an open records request. It just will not be done in real time. That'll roll out in the next couple of weeks. We will precede that with some social media news and some releases just so the citizens are aware of what changes they may see.
Thank you, Chief. City Manager? So I wanted to let folks know and kind of reinforce Councilmember Jones's comment. While we have some amazing technology tools, you can absolutely don't have to get on a phone. You can get on a computer and find out what's going on in the city. In fact, if you hop onto the city's website, you can go and find the city calendar, and I just looked at Saturday, and not counting all the events that have been announced up here, there's another half a dozen events, including what I think is probably the keystone event of the season, which is the Budget Retreat on Saturday, the 10th. So if you guys are interested in finding out what next year's budget's going to look like and the decisions that are going to be made, check that out. Go onto the city website and look up the Budget Retreat on August 10, and we'd love to see you there. It'll be a packed house. With that, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to 34 Texas Administrative Code, Section 3.334, and the related lawsuit of City of Capella, Texas, et al., v. Glenn Hagar in his official capacity as comptroller of public accounts of the state of Texas, cause number D-1-GN-21-003198 in the 201st Judicial District, Travis County, Texas. Item 2, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition. Item 3, Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We are going to adjourn into closed session.